Well, welcome, everybody. Good to see you all. And we are gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. And we start with an invocation, which we observe by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Willetts.
Here.
Five present and one absent.
Alrighty, we've got minutes for approval from April 9.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 9, 2024.
Second.
We have motion of second, clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we've got one item under special business, an interim budget change.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes as prepared by staff and available in the packet.
Second.
We have a motion of second, clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we've got the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-12-24, An Ordinance Amending Boise City Code Title III, Chapter 11, Entitled Downtown Valley Parking, To Clarify Legal Authority and Correct Dramatic Errors and Typos, Adding New Definitions and Amending Some Existing Definitions, Clarifying the Types of Valley Permits, Their Limitations, Exemptions, and Abandonment, Repealing Sections VII and XVI and Renumbering the Subsequent Sections Accordingly, Updating Permit Application Requirements and Permit Fees, Updating and Clarifying Valley Parking Permit Standards, Clarifying Temporary Suspension of Valley Parking Operations, Updating Suspension or Revocation of Valley Permits and Reasons Thereof, Updating the Penalty Provisions, Approving a Summary of the Ordinance and Providing an Effective Date of July 1, 2024.
Thank you. And now, third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD-10-24 and ORD-12-24 be dispensed with and the record reflect that they have been read the third time in full.
Do we motion a second, clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-10-24, An Ordinance CAR 22-10 for property located at 2017 West Victory Road, Amending Zoning Classifications of the City of Boise City to change the classification of real property, Particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from A-1 Open Lands Park Zone to R-3D/DA Multifamily Residential with Design Review and Development Agreement Zone, Setting forth a reasoned statement in support of this zone change and providing effective date. ORD-11-24, An Ordinance CAR 22-14 for property located at 2521 West Victory Road, Amending zoning classifications of the City of Boise City to change the classification of real property, Particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from A-1 Open Lands Park Zone to R-3/DA Residential Urban and Development Agreement Zone, Setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing effective date.
Alright, thank you. So now we're going to move into the-
Madam Mayor, I think we have one more.
Oh, you've gotta pass it, that's right, excuse me.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD-10-24 and ORD-11-24 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, discussion? Clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great, thank you. So now we're gonna move into the public hearing portion of the evening. And there are two items that are related to the same buildings. We're actually gonna hear this all together tonight. And so we'll have some latitude on timing for presentations. I'm just gonna go through the order, so that everybody's aware of how this will work first. I see David's up. David's gonna cover the CAR and the CUP. Richard Jarvis will cover the design review. Excuse me, the historic, the DRH. I just wanna read this, to make sure I'm covering this correctly. Yep. And then, so first, then after that, we're first going to hear from the applicant. And then we will hear that is also appealing, the DRH. Then we will hear from the Neighborhood Association, that's also an appellant, but on the CUP. So then, is anybody from the public here that's not great? So I got just a couple on this list, but if you're here to testify on this, to move things along, if you're, if, once I've called through this, I'll kinda point to you in advance and ask that you sit here, so that we're not waiting for everybody to move around. And then, after the public testifies, we will hear first from the Neighborhood Association, so rebuttals will be no more than five minutes, and then from the applicant. And then we will take all of this up in separate motions. So with that, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The items before you tonight is a development agreement modification and appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of CUP 23-00057 and appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's approval of DRH 23-00329, with a condition limiting the building height to 45 feet. This will be handled, as noted, as one presentation, all representing the development agreement and the CUP, or the Planning and Zoning Commission's appeal, and Richard will be presenting on the Historic Preservation Commission's appeal. The site has a bit of history. In 2017, a four-story mixed-use building was approved for the property. This proposed building is similar in height to what is being proposed now, and the site was rezoned at that time to RO HD with a development agreement from an R2 HD zone. However, the planning approval for the mixed-use project expired, and it was never constructed. But the property was rezoned and the DA recorded. Therefore, the DA modification to change the use and the building design in the agreement and the conditional use permit for the height exception and park reduction was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 4. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the development agreement modification and approved the conditional use permit for the height exception and park reduction. However, this approval was appealed by the North End Neighborhood Association. In addition, the Historic Preservation Commission heard this proposed development on January 29 and approved the project with a condition limiting the height to 45 feet. This condition was appealed by the applicant. And as you can see from the vicinity map, the site is located at a commercial intersection at the edge of the North End Neighborhood, Neighborhood, and is addressed at 902 North 8th Street. The surrounding area is served by several bus routes and bikeways. In addition to the on-street parking being provided, the applicant is proposing an off-street parking lot, which will be located at the corner of 8th and Hayes, and it's marked in blue on this, on this site, or vicinity map. The proposed changes to the DA are limited to Section 3 and Exhibit B. The modification includes changing the wording of Section 3 to what is listed here and updating the exhibit. In summary, it is consistent with the required findings as per the development code and as discussed in the project report. The public expressed concerns with the proposed DA modification. It contends the DA should be terminated and the site reverted back to the original R2 zone. To address this, I would note that Section 7 of the DA identifies several remedies and terms if the terms and conditions of the agreement aren't met. The remedies listed in the DA include modifying the DA or terminating the DA. It also identifies the necessary steps required to implement each course of action. As such, the applicant has requested to modify the DA as allowed in the agreement to in order to accommodate the proposed office use. Now for a short summary of the project and, and the conditional use request. And this is a slight, a slide showing the proposed site plan. The development agreement includes the construct, or the development includes the construction of a three-story office building with an approximate height of 57 and a half feet to the midline of the roof. The RO zone has a height limit of 45 feet when the site is adjacent to a single-family house, and the applicant is requesting a height exception since there is a single-family house adjacent to the north of the site, as noted on the plan. In addition, the parking reduction is requested since 67 off-street parking spaces are required and 50 spaces are being provided on-site. In addition, the applicant is providing 50 additional off-street parking spaces located on a parking lot at the eight, the corner of 8th and Hayes. These spaces will be available for office-related events outside of the standard business hours. In summary, both the height exception and the park reduction comply with the required findings as per the development code. And as for the parking reduction, the site, I would note that the site is located close to downtown with available on-street parking, and is adjacent to two public transit routes with bus stops and walking distance. The site will, or the project design will provide 16 bike parking spaces, and there are several bike, several bike routes in the neighborhood in close proximity. To support the height exception, I would note that there are several buildings within a quarter mile of the site that range in height from three to seven stories, and also the placement of the building along both street frontages orients the project towards the intersection and creates a separation between the taller portion of the building and the adjacent residential neighborhood. And this slide here shows the building elevations of the proposed three-story office building for your reference. The planning team did receive an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval for the height exception and park reduction, and the grounds for the appeals are summarized here. The grounds for the, the first grounds for the appeal contend that the decision was in violation of city law and that the height exception and the parking reduction should have been reviewed as a variance. And to address this, I would note that the development code specifically states that general exceptions, including height, are reviewed through a conditional use process. This is also, I believe, stated in the Local Land Use Planning Act or Idaho State Code. And also, the development code specifically states that parking reductions are reviewed as a conditional use. Second grounds for the appeal contends that the commission decision was made on unlawful procedure, since they did not have quorum. The development code states that a majority of the appointed members are required for a quorum, and quorum shall be established before transaction of business, which is at the beginning of the hearing. It was generally, it is generally accepted that quorum shall be maintained, shall be maintained, provided the commissioners are present at the hearing, which is consistent with Robert Rules of Order and the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission's bylaws. One of the commissioners had, had to recuse themselves from the vote due to potential conflict of interest, but he did not leave the meeting, and therefore, quorum was maintained. The final ground for the appeal contends that the commission's decision was arbitrary, capricious, in disregard of the facts and circumstance presented, since the commission did not consider the proposed use as a religious institution. During the hearing and their deliberations, the commission discussed the use of the building. They addressed these comments related to the use and explained why they did not consider it to be a religious institution or a use related to and operated by a religious institution, such as a thrift store, homeless shelter, or rectory. In regards to the height exception, the commission cited the project report and found that the height exception met the requirements, required findings as per the development code. So in conclusion, the planning team and Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval to the city council of the DA modification and that the, the appeal of the CUP be denied, since the grounds do not demonstrate an error. And at this point, I will turn the presentation over.
Mayor McClain and council members, this is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to add a condition to limit the height of the building to 45 feet. Parcel is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of 8th and Fort Street with an alley behind it, which is Cunningham Place. Here's the site plan, showing how the alley provides access to an underground parking structure and adjacent parking across from Cunningham Place, and how it relates to 8th and Fort Street. This is the first floor plan, where we can see the layout of classrooms and other gathering spaces. The floors above consist primarily of office spaces. This is the south elevation, showing the entrance at the corner of 8th and Fort with the lobby behind it. Also note the use of traditional materials such as limestone, brick, and slate roof, which are in keeping with other prominent historic buildings in the vicinity. This is the north elevation, where you can see the one-story portion that is adjacent to the residential structure, which is 27 feet tall. This is the east elevation, which also shows the one-story portion at the rear of the building. And finally, here's a perspective drawing showing of the primary elevation. This drawing shows how the overall planned massing of the proposed building relates to its environment with the chancery highlighted in red. And these elevation massings comparisons show how the building relates to nearby large buildings in the vicinity with the chancery again highlighted in red. As shown in the project report, staff found that the proposal met the required findings and therefore, recommended approval. At the November 27, 2023 Historic Preservation Commission hearing, the item was deferred, and the applicant instructed to work on improving the overall massing, design, and height of the building. The applicant provided a supplementary narrative that outlined how the project, as proposed, was appropriate in massing design and height, and they intended to proceed without modification. At the January 29, 2024 meeting, the commission voted to approve the application after deliberation with the added condition 1M, which states the building shall not exceed 45 feet in height. Staff has determined there were errors in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision on the following grounds. The condition is an error because it is not supported by substantial evidence. The height of the proposed building is consistent with the surrounding area and existing structures. The commission's decision to add a condition limiting height to 45 feet is not supported by substantive evidence, nor was evidence provided when adding the condition. Therefore, this is an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. Next, the condition is an error because it is arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion. Evidence showed that nearby buildings were similar in scale and form, but not fully considered by the commission. Speculation were made about reducing office size and, and the size of the building. The guidelines state that a range of building sizes within the district is appropriate and encouraged. Therefore, the condition to limit the height to 45 feet was not based in fact, was arbitrary, and an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. The planning team recommends city council approve the appeal, upholding the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to approve the application and removing condition 1M. The grounds for appeal demonstrate an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to place an additional condition of approval on a project that was arbitrarily bound and not based on fact. Staff recommends the following motions that should be made in the following order. With that, Steph stands for questions.
Do we have questions for Steph?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, we're gonna go with Councilmember Hallie Burton and then Willetts.
Um, thank you. Just a couple of questions about the development agreement. And if you don't know the answer to these questions, because it happened a long time ago, then, then that's okay. So, this was originally zoned R2, and then council in 2017 approved a zoning change to RO with a DA and a historic district overlay. Is there a reason why they didn't just approve it as an RO with a historic district overlay? Why did they also add on a development agreement?
Madam Mayor, or Council, Councilmember Hallie Burton, they, they added the development agreement as an additional insurance that the RO would be, or the development would be consistent, or the potential uses in that zone would be consistent with the surrounding area. The RO allows for a lot, a lot of different types of uses. They just wanna make sure this was restricted, restricted to the, to the retail, the residential, and the office that was proposed at that time. And I believe that's why the conditions in the DA specifically restrict out those three uses. And there's a lot of other things in the RO that they didn't, they did not consider would be compatible, and you want to restrict them.
Thank you. And just kinda following up on that a little bit more. So the, so the development agreement that they included was for there to be a four-story building. And my guess is that they included a four-story building, probably because they didn't want it to go higher. Why would they have included a four-story building?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, they included a four-story building, 'cause, I mean, the building was four stories, although it was actually only about 49 feet to midline, so it's actually a little bit less higher, or it's a little bit shorter than this, but very similar. They just trying to figure out.
Let me ask it a different way, that's a hard question to answer. So, if they, if they wouldn't have included a four-story building in the development agreement, could the applicant have come back and built a taller building?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie, no, they couldn't, because at the time that the PUD was requesting a height exception, which was granted, and tied it to the specific plan. And the, the building was tied to the agreement through the Exhibit B, which showed a four-story building at a particular design and standard.
Great. And then the other thing that they added to the development agreement was for there to be, for it to be mixed use, and then for them to identify a certain amount of square footage of shop space on the ground floor. Is that similar in that they wanted to make sure that whatever moved forward had those things tied to it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that is correct.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I have a two-part question. I want a clarification that this development was approved under the old legacy code. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have a question for staff. Under the new code, wouldn't four stories be required in this area?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I, I believe this is MX. It got, because it was RO, I believe the zone got rezoned to an MX zone. Um, I think, I don't believe the MX has a height, has a height standard of four stories. I think MX3 does, but not the MX1, which is what this is.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, had we not rezoned this RO, and then it became MX1, what would it have been rezoned to? Would it, would R2 to what?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, the, it would have been R2. It would have gone from R2 to an R2 zoning. It, it, it would have been the same across.
And would this type of development be allowed in an R2 without conditional use or whatever other type of, or a rezon, maybe?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, there, that, it would not be allowed. R2 is a residential zone. The office uses, I don't think are allowed in that zone, under the new code.
Madam Mayor, just a quick comment here. It's hard to think about the actual height on the spot for every particular zone. I think the MX zone, MX1 is 45. Is that correct? Let me restate that. I'm looking at the website. It says that MX, MX1 building height is 45.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, maximum, I believe that is correct, 45.
Anything further? Alright, we'll hear from the applicant. You're 15. Actually, well, well.
Madam Mayor and members of this council, my name is Christian Welp. I live at 11778 West T-Yoga Street, Boise. And I'd like to request an additional time for a presentation because of the three, uh, three agenda points. Request to present, presentation time of 20 minutes for us and also for the North End Neighborhood Association.
Did you put that request in in advance?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to make sure the other side knew, so that they'd prepared accordingly.
Okay, great.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. I'm the Director of Special Projects for the Catholic Church, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The Catholic Church, as we all know, has been around for a long time. It has a rich architectural heritage that is seen in places like Notre Dame Cathedral in Paris or St. Peter's Basilica in Rome. It is also seen in a smaller way here in Boise at St. John's Cathedral. They are designed and built with materials that stand the test of time. However, we didn't want an office building that just looked old, because we are not just a church of the past. We are growing every day here in Idaho. Young families are having children, people are moving here, and people are joining the Catholic Church at Easter every year. Because of this, we set out to design an office building that reflected our ancient tradition, yet one that is moving into the future. We did not just want a building that looked exactly like St. John's either. We wanted to reflect that look, the physical and spiritual connection, yet a structure that points to the future, one that has modern elements. We did this by incorporating sandstone and brick, materials that are timeless and of high quality, and at the same time, opening up, opening up to the use of glass and using symmetry and step downs in elevation that are more modern. The exterior beauty of the building is also reflected inside. We believe in creating an atmosphere where people want to come to work. The building we are in now, we utilize about 20,000 square feet. In this new space, we set out to create an environment, again, where people want to come to work. By letting in as much natural light as possible, and by primarily having individual offices instead of only cubicles, we have created an inviting, inviting place to work. Lastly, I wanted to briefly speak to the location. Why at this spot? Very simply, it is common for the administrative headquarters of the diocese to be located next to or near the cathedral, which is the parish that the bishop is the pastor of. I thank you again for this opportunity, and I stand for any questions.
We'll, we'll do questions at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mayor, members of the council, Deborah Nelson, 601 West Bannock Street. A quick point of order, Mayor, in response to your question. We did request additional time. We requested 20 minutes, but it wasn't granted. They said we'd have to come and ask you. And so, we didn't know either. When we got here, Mr. Hagan asked if we would also support 20 minutes, so we were on the same page of wanting it.
That one group hadn't prepared 20 minutes of remarks, and the others was gonna have to fill the time and not be prepared. Thanks.
Uh, so I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and along with me as the project architect, Lombard Conrad, and other members of the diocese team. Uh, so as, as staff has described, there's three applications. Oh, let me get this up. Thank you. Um, three applications before you this evening. For each of these applications, the applicant is in full agreement with planning staff, with Historic Preservation staff, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with the Historic Preservation Commission, with only one exception. And that is the height limit condition for the 45 feet. So I'll focus a lot on the height. And to discuss the height, I think it is helpful to compare the building to the council's prior approval for the metro on this site, which was not built. Floors are taller in non-residential buildings than residential, so the three-story chancery is comparable to the four-story metro in height. Uh, the metro was more of a large box that extended back deeper with, and it, and it didn't have the same step downs that the chancery building has. But the front facade and the height is similar. The city measures building height from the midpoint of the roof. So the design and the slope of the roof impact this measurement. The metro was approved for a height of 48 feet 11 inches, based on the midpoint of a relatively flat, low-pitch roof line. This height exceeds the 45-foot limit in the zone and the 45-foot limit now imposed by the Historic Commission. The metro approval is comparable to the midpoint of the main roof of the chancery, which is 50 feet 7 inches. The chancery is requesting a 57-foot 6-inch height, which is measured from the midpoint of a small segment of roof that's elevated at the corner, designed to activate the corner and create a striking entrance and roofline variation. It's important to understand that the main facade of the chancery building is only 44 feet 8 inches, which is under the 45-foot height limit. So given that, it is not the building or the main facade that's visible from the street view that is taking us over the 45 feet, but rather, it's the roof design. A flatter roof line, similar to the metro, could meet the Historic Commission's condition and the zone without a height exception. So why this roof, then? The sloped roof serves the important function of attractively screening large mechanical systems. It also adds aesthetic qualities, mirroring the roof of other historic buildings nearby, including St. John's Cathedral. The roof is designed consistent with the roof pitch called for in the city's design guidelines and is proposed in this beautiful slate material. It is for these very same reasons that Historic Preservation Commissioner Parks did not support the 45-foot height limit condition. He stated during deliberations, "The additional height is providing screening for mechanical equipment, which we wouldn't want to see in any case." He recognized that without this, the building would fall under the allowed height, but that this screening was, quote, "a good use of that height." He stated further, "They're putting it under a slate roof, which is a tremendous expense. That roof will outlast grandchildren, and I feel that it is-" and I feel that it is appropriate as is. As I've said before, I feel that the project overall strikes a nice balance between historic and contemporary. It is of this era, but not pretending to be historic, and overall is a good balance in transition from the urban core into the north end, and I would be in favor of the height as proposed." You can see the roofline variation in the elevations, as well as the different facade treatments to lessen the mass of the building, and the step downs in all directions, especially toward the rear. This rendering illustrates that step down to the neighborhood behind us, providing transition to the single-story office building to our north, which has commercial zoning, and to the one, single-family home located behind the parking lot that is the only structure that triggers the need for the height exception in the zone. Otherwise, the height limit would be 65 feet, not 45 feet. And it's worth noting that that one home is owned by the diocese, who uses it to house priests. So that homeowner is clearly supportive of the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this transition to the rear with the step down in building height, and also the courtyard and the alley separation, and their deliberations supporting the building height as designed. The project is located just inside the North End Historical District. Just across Fort Street to the south is the Hayes Street Historical District, which provides a transition between the more residential north end and the more commercial downtown. Both of these districts recognize the diverse architectural styles, sizes of buildings, and uses that exist now, and both call for new construction to enhance and reinforce that diversity. The North End guidelines state that diversity in the size and the style of buildings is what gives the north end its character and vitality. When we look at the site context, you can really see that diversity, which includes a mix of uses and building heights, including several taller buildings. Here you can see the northeast corner of 8th and Fort, with the currently vacant project site, the office building to our immediate north, then a three-story brick apartment building. Adjacent to our east along Fort Street is the seven-story Capital Plaza Apartment Building, and then several single-family residences. On the northwest corner is Strip Commercial along both 8th and Fort Street, and behind that is the Boise Co-op. On the southwest corner, the St. Joseph's School Building runs the entire block on the south side of Fort Street. Behind that is the historic St. John's Cathedral. On the southeast corner, there's a fuel and convenience store, which is adjacent to the Lutheran Church on the south side of Fort Street. South along 8th Street is the parking lot owned by the diocese that will serve this new use along with the cathedral and the school. One block from the project site to the east is the federal building and courthouse. To the south along 8th Street, there are a variety of office buildings along the west side that range up to four stories. In this diagram with the building elevations of significant area buildings, you can see the chancery is appropriately within the range of surrounding buildings in terms of height, facade length, massing, and footprint. This aerial also illustrates the proposed building in the current context. To the east, you can see the seven-story, 73-foot-tall Capital Plaza Apartment Building, and the six-story, 103-foot-tall federal courthouse. South along North 8th Street includes the 81-foot-tall St. John's Cathedral, and several tall office buildings further south. The buildings in the area show the project is designed and similar, to be similar in scale and within the diverse range of building sizes in the area, consistent with the Historic Design Guidelines. This also supports the Planning and Zoning Commission's determination that a height exception is appropriate, because the project as designed is compatible with surrounding uses. I want to touch briefly on parking, since this is at issue in Nina's appeal of the conditional use permit. At just under 20,000 square feet of interior gross floor area in an office, city code requires 67 parking spaces, one per 300 square feet. The chancery offices will provide 50 onsite parking spaces, 31 in an underground parking garage accessed from a private lane at the rear of the building, and 19 in the rear hidden from public street view. The 50 onsite spaces are sufficient to accommodate the diocese's 35 employees and up to 15 visitors for the day-to-day, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM operations. The 50 onsite spaces will also be available and sufficient to serve trainings or similar gatherings at the chancery office that are scheduled outside of the workday hours. The building is also served by close transit and supports pedestrian and bike access with increased bike parking, and by providing employment in walking distance from residences. These factors alone support an onsite parking reduction, but the diocese also owns another 50 parking spaces less than a block from the chancery at 8th and Hayes, bringing the total parking available to serve the office to 100 spaces. The diocese allows St. Joseph's School and St. John's Cathedral to use the Hayes Street parking lot during school hours, morning masses at the church, and for special events. The chancery building is not intended for hosting any school or church events, which both already have their own much larger assembly areas. Planning staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission did reject Nina's arguments that this is an event center or a religious institution. And just a quick note of comparison on parking needs, under the city's new code, the required parking for this building would be one per 400 square feet, or 50 stalls, which is what we provide onsite. In conclusion, we request the council to grant applicant's appeal to remove the Historic Commission's 45-foot limit condition. The condition is not necessary to meet the guidelines, and would have the effect of eliminating the sloped roof that hides mechanical equipment and reflects the slope of surrounding historic buildings. Historic Preservation Staff's memorandum concludes that the Historic Commission's decision to add this condition is an error for two reasons. It's not supported by substantial evidence in the record that demonstrates the building is consistent with the surrounding area and the existing structures, and it is arbitrary because it is not supported by the applicable historic guidelines. We also request the council deny Nina's appeal of the conditional use permit. The height is comparable to other buildings in the vicinity and compatible with the surrounding uses. Importantly, it steps back to the single story at the rear. And finally, we request the council approve the DA modification to reflect the new owner and the updated project plans. And if you're taking questions now, I'd stand for any questions.
Yep, so there's nobody else that's?
That's it for our applicant presentation.
Great. Yep, any questions now?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Nelson, help me wrestle with this concern I have, in that I feel like council seven years ago rezoned this because of what was in the development agreement, which include mixed use, and that became MX1 under the new zoning code when we rezoned it last year, and now we're amending the development agreement to take out the mixed-use component and make it office space. To me, I have a little bit of problem with, with that. I don't know if there's recourse necessarily here for council to deal with that, but just help me understand what I see as maybe unfair that we rezoned this because it was mixed use. It became mixed use in the new zoning code because of that, probably because of the development agreement, and now we're asking to change the development agreement to make it office space. So we've gone from residential to office. Yeah, just help me reconcile that.
Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, so the development agreement does, does stick with the land and the zoning. And so the RO zoning and the development agreement remain valid on this site. And so the uses that are contemplated in that development agreement can be built on the site. And it's true that the development agreement reflects the project that was presented to the council at that time. But without that, that project being built, that, there is still the development agreement that remains valid, the zoning remains valid. The zoning was determined to be appropriate based on the comprehensive plan and based on the surrounding uses. And so we've still got that dynamic here that it remains appropriate, and so office use was contemplated as one of the uses. It's listed in the development agreement as OR. We're coming in with, yes, one of those uses that's consistent with that, and demonstrating to you again, you know, why it is compatible with the area. It is comparable to the building that was approved there, and so while we need a height exception under the code, so do they. And we're asking for your consideration of this use as being compatible with that area. It makes sense, next to the commercial, as staff introduced it, this is a commercial intersection. We've got commercial across the street, we've got the church, we've got the compatibility between the uses that are proposed here. And that does remain valid under the development agreement and the zoning.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Nelson, another question for you on parking. I appreciate the presentation you did on the parking, and understanding we're kind of in an awkward place where we're between zoning codes, and we have an old development agreement here. Had... Did you want to do 50, or would you prefer to do less? Because we do allow conditional use permit to do less under the new rules. Is 50 what you want to do?
Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, yes, 50 onsite spaces works. They've, you know, they've planned them to be in the underground garage and behind the building, and that combination works on this site, and we think it's more than enough for the use that's proposed. We do also, because we are subject to the legacy code here, we have requested the parking reduction to accommodate that, even though we don't believe it actually is needed for our use, but to meet the code. We have demonstrated how we can meet that with the off-site parking, with the transit availability, and with the street parking. So specifically to answer your question, we're comfortable with the 50 onsite spaces that we have.
And there's nothing in this application that would tie the 50 off-site to this particular development? That's not a condition, that's just something you're acknowledging that there are 50 off-site nearby?
That's a good question. Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, we do have a shared parking agreement that we put into the record to demonstrate that connection and that requirement for the 17 spaces that are necessary to meet the 67 required by code, that that will continue to serve this use.
Do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah. Well, I'll just noodle on it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, so I think in other words, you're saying that if, if this office space were to change use or change ownership, and it would become somebody else's office, which would be an interesting office space, they would still get to have access to that other parking lot, because you've put that in the record.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, yes, that's correct.
But imagine you're in there for the long haul with the building design and everything else that goes there. Madam Mayor?
I actually have a finer, I have a question on that. I'm just curious, and this might... By putting it into the record as a parking agreement, does that preclude the redevelopment of the parking lot in the future?
Madam Mayor, we would, that's up to your discretion, really, of how you want to treat that. That's the diocese's proposed solution for the parking reduction, but you can rely on other conditions, the on-street parking, transit, the fact that we don't need more than 50 really truly to serve our use, without adding that as a condition that it would have to run with the land.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to kind of reflect back to Council President Nash's question. I think there's maybe one step just a little bit further that I'd like you to speak to. So when you answered the question, you said, well, it would still be RO, and this would still be allowed in RO. But what happened in 2017 was that it was R2, and if they were fine with RO, they would have just, you know, approved it as RO without doing a development agreement. Something made them want to keep that development agreement in there, so that it wasn't going to be something different. And if they wouldn't have put that development agreement in there, they might have just left it as R2, which would be a different zone. So why is it that they approved it as, with that development agreement? And how would, if it would have stated R2, would you be justified in moving it forward now?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, to try to answer that, I mean, you're asking a little bit of speculation of what they thought, and so I can speculate with you, but I mean, I think we also do have to look at...
I guess what I'm saying is, is that you're saying that it would still be in allowed use. What I'm saying is that there's a perspective that it wouldn't be in allowed use, because they wouldn't have approved it as RO. They would have left it as R2. They wanted that development agreement in there, so that it would create the outcome that it created.
Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I can, I mean, I don't, I don't know what their intent was. Development agreements are incredibly common, particularly with the RO zone, because it's so broad. I can't think of a rezon I've done before the city that didn't have a DA with it. So, you know, whether that meant they only were going to take a mixed-use development, I mean, that's just pure speculation. I don't know that. That is the project that was before them, and it's, that's what you do when you have a development agreement. You say, yeah, we want this use, that's what we've considered. But legally, what happens when that project comes in then is, okay, it is actually rezoned. I mean, you've adopted that ordinance, it's recorded. That's what is on the site, and the development agreement reflects the project that was before you. It does remain valid, and that's why, you know, I don't, I don't mean to be super technical about it, but it is important. That's how we came here, is that there is RO zoning, and we've stepped through the applications that are needed. The use is allowed in the zone, and so office is allowed. So now we are proposing to you why the height exception is appropriate with the conditional use permit, and why the parking reduction is appropriate with the conditional use permit. The development agreement also allowed office, so we are going to adjust that language to more accurately reflect this use. It is different, and, and to include the new, new project. It's not the same project they considered. I'm not trying to say it was.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Nelson, could you go back to your slide on the parking? So help me understand, you need, under the condition imposed, was for a reduction in parking to 50 spaces?
May I just jump in there? So the, there's no condition limiting or requiring parking. The code in this zone requires 67 spaces, based on a one per 300 square feet. And so that's just the base for this office size. We would be required to provide 67 onsite parking spaces under your code. And so we don't have 67 parking spaces onsite. We have 50, and we have 17 off-site. We also have other reasons that you could approve a parking reduction. You don't always have to have a shared parking agreement with an off-site lot to approve that. Does that?
My understanding, staff is recommending a parking reduction here. That number is what?
They are in agreement with what we have proposed with 50 spaces onsite.
Okay, but you just spoke earlier that there is a shared, there's an agreement in the record regarding this other off-site lot. So I'm getting at what the mayor was getting at, is precluding development within those 50 existing parking stalls, whether by you or another future owner, I don't know. I want to avoid that in this scenario. Is there anything in staff's recommendation that would lead you to believe that? I guess we get to the 50 with onsite parking, and that's it.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, yes, you do, you do not have to require the shared parking as the mitigation for the parking reduction that's requested. Staff was in support of the 50 onsite. I mean, they can speak to this, of course, themselves, but our understanding is they support the 50 onsite. They did request that we demonstrate to bolster, you know, the case before the city, to document what we were saying. That we, you know, we said, well, look, we've got these other parking spaces we can use. We've documented that. You do not have to add that as a condition of approval of this development, so it doesn't bind that. Does that help?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Ms. Nelson, I have a few questions for you, really fast. Can you just confirm, there was a number of numbers in the minutes from Planning and Historic Commission, that height to the very top of the roof, 62 feet 7 inches, is that correct? The very top of the roof?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, it's 62-something. Is that correct? Eight.
Okay, great.
62 foot eight.
To the peak of the roof. To the peak of the roof.
I just found the whole number in the record.
Okay.
Yeah, and I appreciate you discussing kind of what that's concealing. Then, just kind of curious, was there any analysis done on the 35 employees, their expected routes of commuting? So in looking at the number of spots you needed, was there, you know, five that were pretty confident they were going to walk, bike, or ride the bus? Was there any kind of analysis done on current employee makeup and plans when they were considering how many spaces they needed?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, yes, I understand from the diocese that they actually do have employees in the neighborhood that they expect will be walking or biking to the facility. And so they're excited about that opportunity. Also, there's just a lot of opportunity for shared involvement with their own involvement, with the bishop being directly across from St. John's Cathedral. But the 30, there is plenty to accommodate each of them without spilling offsite with 35 spaces and then still leaves 15 available for visitors day to day.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Madam Mayor, final question. So you mentioned the property, the single-family home that's owned adjacent to this property. You know, kind of going, kind of going off of the point that this used to be intended for residential use and that we are in a literal crisis with housing. Was there any consideration to building housing into this project, freeing up that other property, adding inventory? Was that ever a consideration? And was there anything that prevented them from wanting to go that route, maybe on our side or in staff report, anything like that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, well, the priests are living residentially in that home. So that is a residential use, that is their home. It's owned by the diocese. And this is, this is a replacement for an existing office that the diocese already does have in the city. So they are relocating an office, they're not building it new. So they will be relocating to this site in a, in a location that is well-suited for them. So it's a replacement. And this is, this is what serves their project and their needs for citing their 35 employees in this close-in proximity with their additional uses. And so this is, this is the use that they are requesting.
Just follow up. So there was, was there no consideration to adding in residential use into this project because the current offices don't have it? Or was there anything there that, you know, just thinking about incentivizing? You know, we've seen other similar projects come before us to have that mixed housing, the yes-and-god's-backyard type background. Just curious if there was, was there any kind of consideration or something maybe we could do better there to encourage that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, I'm not aware of, you know, any machinations they might have gone through. It's hard to imagine how it wouldn't be a much taller building then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will hear from North End Neighborhood Association.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before we do, I'm sorry, can I request just one question from staff? Because I think it might change some of the testimony that we get from some other folks. Thank you. So my question is, when we roll over from an old zoning code to a new zoning code, does a development agreement roll over with it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, it does. It's tied to the zone, it's tied to the property, so it rolls with it.
So even though this was an RO with a development agreement, in the new code, it will be an MX1? It'll be an MX1 with the development agreement of the old development agreement?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. It'll be an MX1 with the development agreement as recorded or modified.
Thank you, that's helpful.
All right. We'll hear, so for North End Neighborhood Association, you're presenting. I want to make, any part, anybody that's speaking on behalf of Nina needs to be part of this 20 minutes.
Great.
We're going to split the, we'll split the 20 minutes in half.
Okay, great, thanks.
He's going to speak more to the technical part and I'll talk more about the historic committee.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Sandy Herman, 1404 North 7th Street, Madam Mayor and City Council. As my fellow volunteers and I discussed this presentation and our many and varied concerns, we worried it would come across as spaghetti being flung at the wall to see what would stick. But I can assure you, it's not that. This is a problematic project with potential to have a major negative impact on the neighborhood. From the very beginning of this process, there has been no offer of consideration or revision by the applicants despite explicit requests from us and a directive from the Historic Preservation Commission. It appears the design is everything the applicant could ever dream of for a 35-person office building with event center. This proposal does nothing to enhance the large, larger community, the historic neighborhood, or the residential block. And maybe it doesn't have to do so, but it certainly shouldn't work against the interests of the community. This is an incredibly important piece of property. It sits at the crossroads of downtown, the hospital campus, the federal complex, and our beloved neighborhood. If built as designed, this project will be visible from next to the Capitol Building on 8th between Jefferson and State. It will be the largest building in the residential area of the North End. We consider this intersection the gateway to our historic residential neighborhood. I doubt I will ever be in front of you with more important testimony. We ask that you please, please carefully study the floor plans as we make our presentation. The height of this building culminates at the 62 feet, 7 inches, I had 63 feet. As the Neighborhood Historic Preservation Committee, when considering height within the neighborhood, per the historic guidelines, we use the blockface as our guide. The tallest building on the blockface on 8th Street is a modest three-story apartment building. There are also one-story contributing houses and on the blockface, including right next door. As we go further out, taking into account the larger buildings that the applicant has emphasized, we as historic preservationists would like to see the nearby historic churches and cathedral remain prominent in the landscape and not be overwhelmed by this dominant new building. Keep in mind that those large buildings are on, are south of Fort in the transition zone to downtown. A building of this height is not appropriate and does not signify that there is a transition into residential zone. The federal courthouse is not within the historic district. Both in the apartment tower, Capitol Plaza at Cunningham Place sits well back from the street. The apartment tower is well obscured by trees. This proposed building sits right on the busy 8th and Fort sidewalk. Even the cathedral, the tallest building in the vicinity, does not have the impact that this building will, would as it presents its greatest massing directly on the intersection. Cunningham Place Apartment Building, Capitol Plaza, offers the community seven floors of desperately needed low-income housing. But it is important to point out that the structure was built before the existence of the historic district and would likely not have been approved there today. The proposed chancery tops out at 65 feet, just eight feet shy of Cunningham Place at 73 feet. So I think it's slightly less than that. But this project only offers three stories of event and office space. We feel this height is unnecessary and we think the building should reflect the more human scale of the immediate buildings, including the neighboring residences, co-op, strip mall, and school. We think this could be achieved by lowering the height of each of the three, each of the three proposed floors and eliminating the tower and overly large pitched roof. The architect says, has said the pitched roof cannot be eliminated because HVAC and other systems are hidden within the roof. But we have spoken to several architects who say that room for 35 office workers could be provided in a much smaller building. We worry about the relevance of this building both now and into the future. We believe space for 35 office workers could be found in existing empty office buildings close by. This building does nothing to address current issues in our community around housing and climate, and we'd like to see the design, a design that endeavors to endure and is worthy of the use of traditional non-renewal resources like sandstone and slate. We have asked but never had any direct answer about the length of time construction would take. With this building being right up on the sidewalk, this has to mean that there will be sidewalk and road closures. The neighborhood is worried about the impact of this massive, slow-build construction as described by the architect in Boise, Deaf. We'd like to point out some features of the building that make us concerned. The main floor and the greatest amount of square footage that is dedicated to an event center. This main floor includes 21, a 21-person classroom, a 105-seat lecture hall, a 77-person dining hall with prep kitchen, a lunchroom, a conference room, four offices, reception, and large lobby. The upper floors consist of 30 more office worker spaces, two more conference rooms, 38, a 38-person chapel, 10 storage rooms, seven of which resemble office spaces in size and shape with windows capable, we think, of becoming more offices. 23,000 square feet is a luxurious amount of space for 35 office workers, as one of the commissioners previously acknowledged. We have tried to get better understanding about how this space will be used and how often the conference center will be, will host events. Unfortunately, we have been left to supposition because the applicants have been pretty opaque about use and only affirm that celebration, reception events from the cathedral will not be held here. We've been told only four events will be held per year. But as we look at the building, we can only assume that more than 35 people will be in and out of this building every day. We can't imagine another entity on earth that could afford to build a conference center large enough for hundreds of people to only use four times a year. And while that is possible, we remain skeptical. We understand that the city wants to de-emphasize parking and new construction, but this is already a part of town that relies heavily on on-street parking for St. Joe's School, Boise High, the cathedral, nearby businesses, and of course, very dense multifamily housing. The existing parking at nearby Catholic properties is often full, is used as a playground for the school, and cannot be relied on for annexed parking. And that includes on Hayes and 9th, there's the parking for the teachers. They have to back into those spots, and I think anybody, any guest would really find that very complicated. We highly doubt that events at the proposed conference center could be scheduled around weddings, quinceañeras, funerals, regular services, and St. Joe's and Boise High events. The proposed parking for the building includes some existing parking behind the parish house, which is already in use often. This is a complicated part of town to drive in. This is right where 8th and 9th become one-way and the intersections are not square as they meet at the downtown grid. Pedestrians and cyclists are everywhere. We talked to ACHD and they evaluated the impact of this project as a 35-person office space, not as an event center. We think the parking variance should be accepted as it, should not be accepted as is. We believe that with a building this luxurious, the applicant can surely afford to dig deeper for more parking. And we ask that limits for the use of this event center be set, similar to those for the TRICA Center near Hyde Park. Once built, we can't put parameters around how often this building will be used for events and by whom. You might hear from parishioners that very much like the look and style of this building, but for the, for most of them, a 65-foot-high conference center is not being proposed as part of their neighborhood. I honestly don't think it's appropriate for any residential area, particularly when we have, there are many commercial lots available elsewhere. The applicant has pointed out that multiple times that the activities at the cathedral do not overlap with the business of the diocese. So it seems there is no need for them to be closely relocated, and that was said multiple times at the other commission meetings. Many of the nearest neighbors to this project are renters who already don't feel they have a say in much considering the state of our housing market. They are busy keeping their heads above water. Most of our neighbors are heartbroken that this piece of property will not be housing. The original rezon that allows this kind of large building was approved because it meant housing was going to go on this very walkable, bikeable block. Instead, this project will bring even more car traffic to the neighborhood. We urge you to consider the long-term impact of this project.
Thanks, Sandy. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilors, Eric Hagan, North End Neighborhood Association President and Planning and Zoning Chair. I'm also an architect, so if Sandy's the heart, I'm the head. I'm going to be pulling up a lot of stuff for this. The DRH, the Historic Preservation Commission, is a design review, historic review. So it covers historic and zoning code and design items. The CUP is more planning and zoning, the CAR is obviously just for the development agreement modification. So the applicant has proposed one design for their project and has not budged from that, as far as we can tell. They had their neighborhood meeting as was required, and they also met with Nina after the fact, as we had requested. Thank you. They sat and listened to us, nodded, but were pretty much dismissive of our concerns. They didn't acknowledge any neighborhood concerns or even try addressing them. They were subsequently asked by the HBC to go back and take another look at the project to see if they could make it per code while addressing neighborhood concerns. They came back with the exact same design, didn't change a thing. Have they even entertained the possibility of working within the zoning code requirements? The bigger question here is why? Why does it have to be so big? Why can't they meet the zoning code requirements? Though they're under no obligation to, to make that case. In this case, I feel that should be required. Can they fit the program and needs in a shorter, smaller building? Yes. Has Planning Development Services ever asked if they could? I haven't seen that. The applicant and PDS have quoted the design guidelines for residential historic districts many times in the presentation and documentation. They reference sections regarding being considered and in line with height and width and mass and form of the neighborhood, block, and adjacent properties. The proposed structures would seem at odds, the proposed structure would seem at odds with the nature and intent of the guidelines. And sadly, my text is all really small, but it's quotes directly from the design guidelines talking about how the structure should be in line with adjacent structures in massing and form. There's a definition in there of what massing is, which I cannot read from here, need new glasses. But it basically refers to the size, that how the, how the building feels. And you can see in this rendering, the applicant has shown us many times their little line diagram that shows their proposed building with all the large buildings around it. This is the smaller buildings around it, all the houses up 8th Street, the houses behind them on 7th Street, the single-story parking lot, and the houses down Fort Street. As you can tell, they are all much smaller in scale, in mass, in height. We have, we have a set of specific design guidelines for residential historic districts. If they're going to be ignored, misconstrued, and twisted against recognition, why do we have these? It works. The conditional use permit covers zoning code requirements. The applicant has shown the graphic representing other comparable buildings nearby many times referencing mostly larger commercial properties. There are roughly 40 residences within a 300 radius of this project. Why aren't those being referenced? The courthouse that they keep referencing is a federal building. It's not even in the city. It's not on, in a zone that's similar to this. It's down the street and should not even be considered to apply. The church and the office buildings down 8th are in the LO or limited office zone, otherwise known as the Hayes District, that ends at Fort Street. There's a line there for a reason. The purpose of the LO District is to intend to accommodate office space in locations that are served by primary access, but they're inappropriate for commercial development because of proximity to residential. It is also limited to 45 feet in height, as is the MX1 zone. Capitol Plaza affordable housing apartments, as was noted, wouldn't even meet the massing and height of the zoning code today. How are these comps that are being referenced to as worthy as part of the fabric of the historic residential neighborhood? The applicant has represented the height of the building as anywhere between 44 feet, 8 inches at the low point to 62, 7 feet at the high point, 57 feet, 6 inches to the midpoint, and at times 55 feet to the midpoint. The staff report actually referenced 53 feet, 8 inches in the staff report. I have taken the liberty of taking Lumber Conrad's drawings and scaling them. I use Bluebeam software, it's highly accurate within inches when you're scaling off of that. So I've provided the information that is missing from their application. The lower parapet is 44 feet, 8 inches. The upper parapet is 52 feet, 5 inches. Again, my eyes are playing tricks on me. The midpoint is closer to 60... 50, 57 feet, and then the top of the roof is 62, 7, 62, 8, as they've noted. Many times, the applicant's legal representative has referred to the primary parapet as 46 foot, 8 inches, when in fact, that is actually the lower parapet height and the primary parapet in the middle of the building, as you see in this rendering, facing the intersection, is actually closer to 52 feet, 5 inches. This is all the... This is all leading to a difference in apparent design, proposed height varying upwards of six feet. Never once have they provided a graphic representation of what the actual proposed elevation is, as defined by the Legacy zoning code, which is to the midpoint of the highest gable. When requesting to deviate from the zoning code, typically you would provide the information on the drawings as to what the height is that you're requesting. They did not provide this information. The applications, again, not having height information, have also been missing area information and occupant counts on it. I've taken the liberty, again, with Bluebeam software, it's accurate within about a square foot for the areas. You've heard twenty-three thousand referenced a lot of times for the area of the building. That's roughly what it would be if you went to the outside of the building. Strangely enough, the Boise zoning code has you measure from the inside of the building. So when I measure from the inside of the building, I get eighty-six thousand on the ground floor, sixty-three hundred on the second floor, sixty-seven, sorry, fifty-seven forty-two on the third floor, taking into account the two-story atrium that's there. While I understand that these areas will often change through the process, the building area has been represented from twenty-three thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet, and now in their latest correspondence, it's nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty square feet. All the while, they've never actually shown the area on the plans, and that totals up to about twenty-one thousand square feet, not under twenty thousand. If you're going to ask for reduction in parking, why not just submit the project under the new code? Well, they don't want to, because the new code would require them to step the building back. If only rough, if only thirty-three spaces are needed. Yes.
Eric, could you repeat that? What is your speculation as to why this project wouldn't?
Oh. The new zoning code in MX-1 district up against residential would require the building to step back as it goes up in height from the residential district. If only thirty-three spaces are needed on site, why have an office building that has the potential to fit upwards of five hundred people? There's so many storage rooms with offices that could be, that could be easily converted. There's assembly uses on the, on the ground floor totaling five to eight thousand square feet. Why have it spread across seven different areas? Lots of text in there, but it basically is talking about how the, the RO zone is a transition zone. The RO zone, by the way, is, is the only one, this is the only property in the area that has an RO zone. The R2 zone is limited to thirty-five feet. The RO zone is forty-five feet. MX-1 is forty-five feet. RO is limited to forty-five feet up against single-family residential. The commercial property just to the north that keeps getting referenced is, per the Ada County Assessor, an apartment and an office building. The original DA was approved for a specific project type by a specific developer. It's intrinsically tied to the RO zone conversion. Approval came with other documentation and review. The DA should have effectively been null and void by the developer by failure to follow through with his material obligations building the project that would result in reverting back to R2, which it would still be today. Why not just go for their own development agreement instead of trying to modify something completely unrecognizable? The city has been pushing for more housing for, for more years. Why push for this? Why has the applicant not provided a zoning code evaluation, as you see here, as is customary and typically provided when asking for waivers from the zoning code? Many parishioners attended the meeting back in February. Some of them were licensed architects. None of them mentioned the zoning code as one of the, one of their charge, as is their charge as a licensed professional. Code-compliant path. They could combine the assembly areas. If they're only going to use them a couple of years, why do they need so many of them? Combine them into multipurpose spaces. Don't modify the DA. The CUP should have been requesting a primary office use as this primary use with uses related to a religious institution. How this is not considered a use related to a religious institution is beyond me. The, the code has or similar in there. If they meant it to just be rectory or homeless shelter, they would have just left it at that. It's or similar. It's owned by the church. It's operated by the church. It's across the street from the church. Reduce the area of the building such that there's more than, more in line with thirty office occupants. That would get it closer to the parking requirements. I've taken the liberty of cutting and pasting their plan, combining the third and the second floor to show that you can do this in two store, in two floors. Another option would be to reduce the floor-to-floor height, as Sandy was saying. I've designed plenty of office buildings, and typically they're fifteen feet on the first floor, twelve feet floor-to-floor on the second and third floor. That's well under forty-five feet in height.
Time.
Yes, they can make it work. Even with the mechanical equipment on the roof, sixteen feet is a lot of room for a mechanical equipment. You can fit that in a lower-sloped roof. You can also change the profile of the roof.
You, you hit time a little bit ago, so I'll just ask you to wrap up with a final sentence.
Okay. They could step the building back. There are so many questions.
You know what? That's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you use the rest for rebuttal.
Okay.
Thanks. Actually, any questions though for Eric? All right, thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Looks like you might have one. Councilmember Willetts, for Eric?
Yeah, for Eric. Eric, can you talk a little bit more about the religious institution criteria in the old legacy code? I'd like to drill down on that a little bit.
The definition in the old, in the legacy code for uses related to, can I get that slide back up? Definitions on the right side there. Uses related to and operated by a religious institution such as a thrift store, homeless shelter, rectory, or similar that is operated by a religious institution and located on the same parcel or an adjacent parcel to the religious institution.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks. I just turned that off. So now we will move into public testimony. April Fredericks is on my list first, and then Andy Urstad. Anybody else planning on testifying? Great. Make your way up to the, you're good right there. But sir, will you make your way up to the front, please, if you're planning on testifying? All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm April Frederick. I live at fourteen sixteen North Eighth Street. I have attended all the meetings regarding this new building. And I, at the, the first meeting, I expressed how disappointed I was that this particular site is so meant for housing and how it won't be used for housing. But it feels like, I, I don't know if that's useful to talk about at this point. This building is huge. It would tower above the neighboring buildings and, and I, and it's from the perspective of looking north towards the north end that made it would dwarf the buildings around it. I've seen the drawings three times showing the proposed building versus the diocese's building. There's a fifteen-foot difference between the buildings. They are not the same size and mass. I, it's just a misrepresentation. Last, at the last meeting, we had a lot of parishioners call in saying how beautiful they thought the building is and, and that they thought it was, that it should be built, and only one of those parishioners actually lived in the North End. I'd, I'd have to ask, why can't the diocese's build a beautiful building and just take it down a notch? Otherwise, it kind of comes off like the big Catholic welcome to the North End. I mean, it's just, it's just too big. And I also don't understand if the amount of space is important at something like, I think it averages out at seven hundred square feet per employee in those, that's like, that could house so many people. If, if it's really important to have that much space, why not bring the back of the building that's lower, bring it up higher and just make the overall outside footprint lower? So I urge you not to make the height exceptions for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Urstad, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my name is Andy Urstad, three ten North Fifth Street. I have a really simple request, and that is to, to uphold the, the actions that have been taken and eliminate the height, the height limit, and let's get this building built. I drive by this site. I have driven by it for quite a few days of my sixty-four years, and I used to do business at Baird's. I'm disappointed I have to go down to, to State Street Marketplace to get my clothes, but when, when we lost Baird's, we lost that sort of unique, interesting icon, and, and I've seen many, many developments proposed for this site, and I, I think this development is very appropriate for the neighborhood. It's very appropriate for the transitional zone. And it, I think it's stepping up on the quality and the materiality, and I would say, please support the project and let's, let's get something built in, in this general area. So I'd stand for any questions.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. First, I'll speak as a Catholic. Just for full disclosure, I work for Saint John's Cathedral, and then indirectly for the diocese of Boise, so I have a dog in the race. So as a Catholic, one of the things that distinguishes Catholicism is that the chancery is by the cathedral. Unfortunately, in our diocese, Idaho, you know the story of Idaho, where the population of Idaho, et cetera, we weren't able to accomplish that. And now we have an opportunity to, well, to maybe correct what we, we Catholics collectively missed out on some generations ago, and that's to have the chancery next to the cathedral. Because what we have now is the chancery, it's like, it's like the moon. It's out there on Federal Way, and it's isolated. As we spoke about the whole religious thing, the chancery is it needs to be closer to the cathedral. So we have an opportunity, hopefully, to correct what some generations ago just frankly wasn't possible. Second, I want to speak as a historian. The oldest institution now in the world is the Roman Catholic Church. Well, the emperors of China had a long run, but that's gone now, right? Nineteen forties, Mao Zedong, China went communist, the pharaohs.
Madam Mayor, could we, could we keep this on the land use application?
Sure. The council president is asking that you stick to the land use application.
Well, I think it's an appropriate place for the chancery to be located. And then, secondly, on this notion, it, it makes sense to link these two elements because it's not primarily a religious building. The religious building is a block away. That's Saint John's Cathedral. And historically, the church has always had a business side, and that's what the chancery is, and it's been zoned as an office. Third and final, I want to speak as a Boisian. And I grew up at six nineteen Union, which is a block away from there. So as we come into the city, and I heard the testimony here, but it is what it is. The, the federal building's there. It, it's a big place, and right behind it, we have the Cunningham Place. So those are large structures already in place. And I would just once again want to reiterate, we have a chance, maybe for a lot of years, Boise had challenges with a big hole at Eighth and Main. And we have a hole now at that intersection. And this might be an opportunity to do something nice for one of the best parts of this city, Boise's North End. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yep, got a question. We've got several.
All right, I'm your popular. So since you know more about chanceries than I do, I've got a question for you. Have you heard or been to any that had any sort of mixed-use component? In other words, have you been to any that weren't only used for the office space or the intent of the Catholic Church itself, but were open to the public?
The, well, chanceries I would speak to would be dioceses of Helena and Seattle.
I knew, I knew I should ask you.
Most of it, it's, chanceries, they do kind of business things. I mean, I, I work at the cathedral, and we're not really sure what they do.
But not that have.
It runs on its own system.
I'm asking you if you've know of any that have a mixed-use component other than that main purpose that you're referring to as the business side of the Catholic Church.
I believe actually the diocese of Salt Lake City, yeah, actually mixes it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
One more, sir.
I didn't, I didn't catch the gentleman's name. Did he say that for the record?
I, I don't really.
My name is John Esersa.
Thank you.
That was it? Okay, great. I guess that was it. Thank you. And ma'am, I'm actually gonna, sorry, not you, the woman behind you. We've met before. I'm sorry. I can't remember your name, but you've been waiting, so I wanted you to come on up.
Mayor, Council President, and Council Members. My name is Kathleen Elliott. I am the owner of nine twelve North Eighth Street, and I have owned that building for twenty-three years. That is directly north, just across what has formerly been an alley and is now called Cunningham Place. My building is a historic building. It is on the historic market tour. My building is a single-story building above ground. There is a basement. My building has been my office, and it's been my home. Recently, with permitting prior to COVID, we started the project. We have spent a great deal of money to convert the one residence into two. My building contains a small office which faces Eighth Street, and that has always been the configuration. As you heard the architect say tonight, the diocese has and continues to characterize my building as an office only. That's simply not true, nor does the record show that. In fact, the majority of the footage of my building is residential. There is a residential bedroom and two residential bathrooms directly across from the outdoor space that's proposed for the diocese and within four feet of Cunningham Place. It's important to note that Cunningham Place, again, is a single-lane road that is used for two-way traffic. When Baird's was located there, there were two ways to their parking and behind the building, one off of Fort and one off of Eighth Street. As you know, the Eighth Street corridor is being used for, or being planned to be, a bicycle and pedestrian way. In the years, the twenty-three years that I have owned, worked, and lived at this property, there are numerous accidents that have occurred at this intersection. There has been far less traffic than we will anticipate. And I would also note that there are many folks who have challenges who live in Boise City housing just behind this place and use that single-lane road as a walkway and to get around town. The original plan and agreement for nine oh two North Eighth property was consistent with the historic nature of the North End Historic Residential Neighborhood. I'd note that the historic two-story apartment to the north of my building is also consistent with the residential and historic nature of the neighborhood.
Time.
You're, you're at time, so I'm going to ask you to use a sentence to wrap up.
I simply ask you to recognize, for the first time, despite what all the records have said and despite my letters to the city, that my building is residential. It has always been residential in nature with a small business component. And I ask you to deny the modification and to grant the Nina appeal. Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, sir? And then you.
My name is, my name is Deacon Scott Perhill. I'm a deacon for the Roman Catholic Church. I work in the current chancery and can maybe shed some light on the mystery of what happens there. I live in the North End neighborhood. I am one of the, I, I live at eight twenty North Harrison Boulevard. I'm one of- I am one of the, I live at 820 North Harrison Boulevard. I'm one of the people who would walk to work or bike to work. I was not mentioned at the previous meeting where one of the NINA representatives said there was only one person who said they would walk to work, so there must be two, because I am a second. The chancery building is the administrative center for the Roman Catholic Diocese of Boise, which covers the entire state of Idaho. I wouldn't characterize it as a business office. I would characterize it as an administrative office. Administration takes place there. I think the building is going to be beautiful. I think a lot of work went into consideration of the North End and respecting the buildings around the proposed new chancery. I want to say that in the NINA presentation, they said that the new chancery building, the new administrative center would somehow overshadow even the cathedral. Just a note, the cathedral's roofline is in the 80-foot range and this one is much lower. The chancery building is designed not to overshadow the cathedral, but to be a satellite to it, if you will. It's a, it's a gorgeous design. It's a design with materials that will stand the test of time. It's not a fly-by-night building. And I think it will add to the North End, and I'm quite proud of it.
Madam Mayor, good question.
Yep.
Will this be your new, this would be your new space?
Absolutely.
Great.
Yeah.
And so, and you're familiar with everything that goes on inside. Can you tell me a little bit about, it looks like there was maybe a classroom or a conference room or two there in the space. What are those typically used for?
Yeah, those are not for the general public. Those are for Catholic usage, priest formation, this kind of thing, meetings where priests need to come and hear from the bishop. It's not, I would say, an event center. The, we already have that. We have a much larger space at the cathedral. It is a place where lectures and formation for Roman Catholic clergy could take place. And I imagine that's why it's said that that would happen four times a year, because that's the pace at which such things actually happen. Yeah, so weddings are not taking place there. Again, we have the cathedral where people want to get married. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, a couple, a couple of questions, follow-up. So I think you all proposed for, that you would have about four events there per year. I don't know that that would.
I actually learned that from you today. I'm not one of the experts. I do work in the building, but I don't have that technical knowledge, but go ahead, yeah.
In the past, on other similar buildings that have had similar uses, we've restricted a certain amount of events with a certain amount of people per year. How often do you think that there may be more than, let's say, 100 people in the building?
Very rarely, I would say. I mean, I'm just basing off of my current work experience. Meetings that take place in the building tend to have fewer than that.
So if I were to.
And by point of answer to that, there aren't 100 active priests in the whole state of Idaho.
So if I were to say you could have this space, but you're not allowed to have more than 100 people in there more than 10 times a year, is that a realistic use of that space?
Well, I'm not sure that I'm qualified to speak to that, but my experience has been that that, that is the pace of usage. What you're describing is the pace of usage that I have experienced.
Yeah, I just threw out a ballpark number.
I can throw it over to Christian Welb, the Director of Special Projects. He would be able to answer that question more specifically, but I'm in agreement with you that that's been my experience.
I think you'll be testifying at the end, so maybe you can just put that in the.
You should answer that, because I saw a different answer coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hello, I'm Autumn Street. I live at 1415 West Fort Street. I actually live in the transitional area that they keep speaking of between downtown and the more residential North End. My block in particular, there are 10 buildings on the block and 10 out of 10 of those are residential. If that gives you some idea of our gateway area that they reference, where a 65-story or 65-foot building would fit in seamlessly. That's not necessarily a true representation of the space. That said, I do appreciate the use of the sandstone and the other quality material.
Yes, you just pause for one second. I have that ADD. If you all need to talk, please do, but if you could do it outside, that would help. I'm just getting a little distracted.
Sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, please continue.
If you would like, you can start over.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'll just, I'll just move over. So I do, I just wanted to say that I do live, I think I'm the only person who's spoken that does live in that transitional area. Yes. And, and so I, I know that 10 out of 10 buildings on my, on my block are residential or business and residential both. And none of them exceed two stories. So I do have a question. The applicant states this is not a religious building. It does, however, house a mid-size chapel. And I would question if it's not religious, if they do plan to pay property taxes as any commercial building would. That seems to be convenient to call it nonreligious while also performing religious activities on-site. The last thing I want to mention is, is the very definition of a variance. It allows development projects to deviate from the zoning code on a case-by-case basis if the developer can prove a unique economic or physical hardship. I've seen neither stated here in any capacity. There is no physical hardship. There is no financial hardship. There's simply no hardship that would require them to build a taller building than code allows. So, thank you.
Thanks. You hear her testify? Anyone else?
My name is Neil McGuire. I live at 1011 South Seventh Street, which is pretty much kitty corner to the proposed project. I went to St. Joe's School and I grew up in the area. I've spent the majority of my life in the North End. And I really love it there. I've reviewed the designs of the building and it seems like the designers, the architect, have done all they could to ensure that it's not going to be an imposing presence on the neighborhood and that it integrates smoothly with the surrounding residential area as well as with the transition between the urban core of the city. I would just like to request that the city council proceed with the planning and zoning recommendation. Thank you. I'll yield the rest of my time or whatever.
Thanks. All right, anyone else? Why don't we see if there are questions directed at staff?
Madam Mayor, I do have at least one person online as well.
Oh, online. All right. How many people are online? Just one? All right.
Madam Mayor, this is Claire Linter.
Madam Mayor, I have more people with their hands raised, so let's do Katie Fight first.
Okay.
Mute. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Katie Fight, 1006 North Fifth Boise. I'm just baffled how this can be considered not a religious institution. Nearly all the supporters that have spoken, I mean, spoken about it have tied it into the church in various ways that also extend beyond just an office. We're going to have priest meetings here.
Katie, Katie, I'm going to ask the same question that the council president asked, and that, and that is that we not discuss the religion, but that we discuss the land use?
Okay, but I believe there is an element of the religious aspect of this building that hasn't been brought up, and it's that the building juts out very close to Eighth Street. There's a big multi-story glass front, and inside that will be a very large cross. So in my mind, the design of the building is tied in to making a religious impression in various ways. And I'm concerned because of the diversity in the neighborhood that there should not be overpushing essentially of religious iconography, et cetera. Especially jutting in the face of people driving by at this gateway to the North End. And it's not just like this, there's a, just a regular square grid. The street actually goes at an angle. And so you're almost having to sort of look toward the building and then look away. And I'm very, I'm very concerned about the comparisons to the existing buildings, the Cunningham Place Building and the federal building. They, those buildings have major setbacks. And they have mature tree screening. This building appears to me, at least on the Fort Street side, to have cut back on the tree space that is eight feet. The Ada County Tree Space Strip. And actually reduced, you know, the, the, the ability to have a tiny bit of vegetation screening. And then I drive by this and or walk by this regularly, and the traffic has gotten much worse just in the past two or three years, and it's only going to get worse on Fort Street. There, traffic is now backed up at red lights. Then we're going to have the bike project on right, right in front of this building. There's a gas station. All the artist drawings really don't give a sense of how cramped in this building will be. I mean, how cramped that intersection there will be, and I believe very, very dangerous. And there's going to be an ever-increasing traffic backlog, which ties into the parking space reduction. And I have a question. Will parishioners be coming into this building, not just the people working?
Katie, you're at time. And as you know, we, we don't take direct questions, but if the applicant chooses to answer that in rebuttal, that's where it'd come from. And with that, it looks like Claire. Thanks, Katie. It looks like Claire Linter, maybe?
Yes.
Claire, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of the project. I think it would be beautiful. I live at 727 East Highland View Drive, which is just above the North End. I attend St. John's and just to reiterate, there's a ton of space for events at St. John's, so this building is not, is not supposed to take the place of what happens at St. John's. As they mentioned earlier, it's administrative building and sitting at the junction, you know, between some larger buildings and between commercial and residential, I think it would actually be beautiful addition, and I appreciate that it's carefully, I guess, the, you know, high-quality materials that's going to last a long time. So that's all I just support.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next.
Madam Mayor, this is James McGuire.
Hi, yes.
Yep, you're up.
Okay, hi, James McGuire. I live at 818 East Highland View Drive. I support the project. I support the approval of the existing, the modification of the development agreement. The project, from what I have been able to see of it tonight and read in the record, has followed the processes and procedures laid out by the city and the staff to make the adjustment to the existing development agreement. The underlying zone, RO, allows the office use by right. The development agreement also specifies office use as an, as an allowed use. I spoke at the planning and zoning meeting, also in support of the project, and so I would also like to recommend that that appeal by NINA be denied and that the project move forward. St. John's is a, has been an institution in the North End for over 100 years. I think our community is founded upon the foundation of institutions that have made the city what it is. And this institution, the Catholic Church, in this project has followed what is required and gone above and beyond in terms of providing a building which would be a long-term benefit, both to the neighborhood by introducing more people living, I mean, working in the area. And I think it's important that the city do what it can to support institutions that create the life of our city. In terms of mixed use, you know, the Catholic Church, Catholic means open to all. And so while this is the administrative center and people from around the state will come to work on the business of the, of the church, it has a large lobby because it is open to all, from what I can see. And in that regard, it is a mixed use because people can come in and discuss and talk and learn more about what it is that the Catholic Church contributes every day to our city. Thank you very much, and I hope that you will approve all the staff recommendations and have the project move forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, last person online is Leah McMillan.
Hello, I'm Leah McMillan. I reside at 3050 West Hester. Although I do not live in the North End, I live adjacent to it, and I have a child that attends North Junior High and frequently in the area. I also happen to be an architect and a parishioner. And I present, I also gave testimony at the planning commission meeting. I feel like the parking for the building has been shown to work. The corner piece and how it fits in with the neighborhood is beautiful. It does step down towards the residential areas. I also feel like the design team has been presenting these things over and over and need to be trusted. They have worked with the client. They know what the client needs, what the client desires for that piece of property. And yet we keep asking them, have you considered this? Have you considered this? I'm sure they've considered it, and now we need to let them be able to move forward and create this beautiful corner for the North End. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public's testimony. And we will take a five-minute break and then come back with questions for staff. And then we will hear rebuttals. All right, we'll go ahead and start with questions for staff.
Madam Mayor.
Let's start with Lucy online, then I can better manage the inside of the building.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for staff. I would like clarity on what is allowed from a land use perspective in regards to religious institutions, since that has come up several times.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think the definition in the legacy code for religious institution is a place where that is primarily used for worship, which would be the cathedral. The way the staff sees this, that this is an office building tied that is basically that happens to be owned by the diocese and is used for their administrator, minister functions of the church. And that religious, other than maybe the, the chapel on the third floor, which we see as accessory to the primary use, which is that of basically an office use to, for the administrative functions. There is another section there for uses related to a religious institution such as rectory, homeless shelter, thrift store, or similar use, but we don't see an office as a similar use to any of those, those functions.
And then Madam Mayor, one more?
Yep.
I know I asked this before, and given all the testimony, I just think we need some, some further clarity. Under the legacy code, well, actually, let me rephrase that. If this were to be proposed under the new zoning code, would it be allowed?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe in the MX zone that a really. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe in the MX zone that a, a, an office use is a, is allowed in that zone, um, with design, provided it meets design standards. So that's what we, that's how we'd review this.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. David, would this development be allowed under the new zoning code with the existing development agreement unamended? Which requires mixed use?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the MX zone does allow, and it is a mixed use zone. So they could put, I think, um, retail or restaurant in there, uh, and at a certain size. It does limit that. So they could, so the DA does allow for office, residential, office and, and retail. And those are all uses allowed in the MX one. Although they're not necessarily proposing all of those uses with this. The height exception, the new code doesn't allow for height exceptions anymore. So they would have to, under the new code, limit it to forty-five feet. Cause that was removed with the, the new ordinance.
So David, they could not apply for a conditional use permit to exceed the forty-five foot height?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, that, um, the height exceptions had been removed. You just got to comply with the height of the zone in the new code.
Madam Mayor, David, my question is.
Before we go to that, I, I feel as though we just got two answers. So I'd like to go back to Council Member Willett's question. Um, and it's not, her question wasn't the use. It was the building as proposed with all the, with the design, with the DA, et cetera. Would it be allowed under the new zoning code? Because I heard yes, and then I heard no, so I'd like clarification on that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as for the building as proposed in its size and mass, would not be allowed under the new zoning code because we don't allow for height exceptions. They would have to cut the building down to forty-five feet.
Okay, I think that's an important distinction. But I also want to be clear that this is not under the new zoning code, and this is legacy zoning code. Um, but I don't want this to become a reason to say that the new zoning code works or doesn't work. Because the answer is clear, that as designed today, unfortunately, it, it'd be so much easier if it just worked in the new zoning code, but this is not in the new zoning code. But the answer was no. If this was new zoning code, um, there would not, you'd have to, there would not, it would not be approved. However, I need to remind council that today we are looking at legacy code. And with the DA, on the DA, staff has said it, it allows residential, commercial, and retail.
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to complicate that anymore. They're applying, if they applied underneath the new zoning code, they wouldn't be applying underneath the conditional use permit. But they would probably be asking for a variance, and they could ask for a variance for a taller height. I believe that came up in a past meeting, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I believe you are correct. We don't have a height exception anymore, but technically it would fall under variance because it is a request for a waiver from a dimensional standard. Although the findings for variance are much different than that of a conditional use.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, um, I have a question about the language in the development agreement. We heard testimony from the applicant that the mixed use designation in there is an or designation. Uh, the way I read it and is the proposed new building will be a, now I'm reading from the old, the existing development agreement, four-story mixed-use building. The proposed amendment would be three-story office building. If we were to say we're, we're keeping this mixed use, it's not going to be just office, what would be the implications of that from a land use perspective? What would be the legal implications of that?
Madam, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, you are correct, I believe the applicant is requesting to change that section or that part of section three to remove the mixed use. If it were to stay, then they would have to incorporate some sort of mixed use component in there. And I think it even goes so far as to call out a certain amount of square footage for, for retail, which is not what they're proposing, but that's what the old DA specifies.
So the mixed use could be retail, it doesn't have to be, say, housing. It ha, it could be any one of a number of uses?
Any one of the, Madam Mayor, members of council, it could be any one of the three uses listed. Although offices, I believe, one of those uses. So it, it's, but a mixed use implies a, a, a variety of uses, not just all one. So they probably need something other than office, like a retail or residential.
Further questions? Okay, we will move into rebuttals. First, we have the Neighborhood Association.
David or Richard, can I get that last slide up again? How long do I get?
Five minutes.
Should have stapled this stuff. And I can forward to the one particular, not that one. That one. So, um, Madam Mayor, Council President, fellow councilors, thank you for going through all this tonight, I know there's been a lot. Where I was leaving it was on how to make a code compliant path forward. And there is code compliant path forward. Can reduce the height to code compliance by reducing each floor height. What they propose is about fifteen feet four to four. Typical office is about twelve feet four to four. As I started, the, the bigger question here is why? And PDS, PDS staff should be asking the same questions of the applicant instead of simply recommending approval without any conditions. TRICA had many conditions applied to their approval. Interface Sanctuary has been tasked, taken the task to go back and reevaluate their project and provide more data to back it up. This applicant has provided no reason why they can't make it work within the zoning code. But it can. Case in point, right there. Not only, not only will these modifications work, but they will also reduce the environmental impact of the building while still providing for a very nice usable building. Most three-story office buildings are well under forty feet, forty-five feet in height, including the space that we're in right now. This portion of City Hall is a three-story building. It's about forty feet tall. These chambers are about eleven feet tall. We've been looking at a design that proposes about a fourteen or fifteen-foot tall lobby. The lobby in this building is nine feet. You can see that there's plenty of room to work around in there. An office building for thirty-five people is about ten thousand square feet. They have proposed a twenty thousand square foot building. Can they provide a smaller conferencing and gathering area than they have proposed? Yes. By their own testimony and documentation, those spaces are only going to be used a couple of times a year. So why do they need so much of it? Why, why not combine them into multipurpose rooms? As I was going through all this stuff, I saw an ad that LumberConrad had up. And the key tag there was that they provide architecture for everyone. Made me think of the city's byline, a city for everyone. Why is the neighborhood and the concerns of the neighborhood and the North End Neighborhood Association, the people that live in and around this project, essentially not being addressed when they can so easily make it work and be code compliant? There's so much inaccuracy, misleading, incomplete data, intent of the zoning code and the intent of the processes that is missing. And so regarding this project and the three applications before you today, there's enough questions in there that it should warrant a relook at it. We're not saying no to this project. We're not saying no to the use. We're just asking for some consideration in regards to the neighborhood. This property is a one-off. Everything else around it is going to be limited to thirty-five feet in the R2 or forty-five feet in the MX one moving forward. Everything else is. Why does this one get to go above and beyond when they don't have to? For all the reasons above and all the code references that I've referenced, I'm just saying that we should send this back to Planning Development Services and the Planning and Zoning Commission for a relook at to apply conditions to it in line with, with the legacy zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any, but before we lose Eric, any questions for Eric? All right, thanks.
And now the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Appreciate the, the questions, um, and also the comments from the neighbors. And, and I'll try to address each of them. Just a few quick things at first, um, the, the courthouse is an appropriate building to compare to here, it's, it's one block to the east along Fort. And it was considered by, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission as they looked at the surrounding buildings and also by both historic and, um, planning staff as they looked at compatibility under the guidelines and the code. The streetscape will be developed and improved. Ms. Fite asked questions about that. There will be streets, uh, scape trees, an attractive landscape buffer. There's plenty of room for that. The setbacks are in compliance with the zone there. On the, on the question of the religious institution, I think staff answered that well. The definition is that it's, you know, this is a building that's used primarily for religious worship and related religious activities. That is not what's going on here. The, and the use here is office. The, um, the use is not determined by the owner, nor is it determined by an accessory use like a chapel, you know, no more than a hospital would be that has a, has a chapel as well. We heard some information from Mr. Hagan about the measurements. We are in agreement, um, with the measurements that I heard him say. It sounded exactly like what we had on our slide. So, um, obviously whatever the details are, that has to meet those numbers that we've said. So if the measurement is different and different software, we still have to meet those numbers. But the, um, dimensions that he read off, it sounded like consistent with everything that we have presented as well. We are not trying to sidestep any particular zone or code, as was alleged. We are simply coming forward, the application was filed well within the legacy code, the zone that was applicable at the time. There's no intent to, um, avoid new zoning. This is just the, the code in the, in the zone that was allowed and appropriate and, and applies to this application. The development agreement that's on the, the property that we are asking you to modify to reflect the new owner and the project. You know, Council Member, uh, Council President Nash, I just wanted to point you to section three that we were talking about, and that's where we are asking for changes. But it does currently provide that this agreement and the conditional rezone permits all uses in the RO zone on the property as specified in Boise City Code, including the following uses that are currently proposed by the developer. And then it lists those with an and/or, and so office is part of that. But it's just listing what was proposed. All of the uses that are allowed in the RO are what's, what's at least contemplated in the permitted uses. Again, turning to the proposed building, the project that was before the council, yes, that is where it says the four-story mixed-use building, um, and the shop space. And so what, what our discussions were, were early on coming in with this application is that we would clean this up to be reflective of the new project, we're supportive of that. But we are still looking for a use that's allowed in the zone, in a height that's compatible with the neighborhood and consistent with what was contemplated here. The use offers a nice opportunity, uh, for the relationship with the existing and surrounding uses. It creates additional mixed-use activity. They, the historic design guidelines contemplate a mix of uses here. And having office and employment right here on this corner provides a nice opportunity to supplement the, the residential uses that are in the neighborhood for that walkability and also the commercial uses that are right there. And so that, the intersection there of the, the North End Historic Guidelines and the Hay Street Historic Guidelines contemplate this kind of mix of uses, the diversity in sizes, and we're excited to be a part of that. The diocese has, uh, designed a beautiful building. And, um, they, they have uses that are compatible with what's there. And they're excited to be part of this community in a, in a more expansive way by bringing their employees close to their church and their school and bringing that into the neighborhood where they have employees that live. For all of these reasons, we, we ask for your support of the project. We ask you to modify the development agreement to reflect the project that is presented before you, to support the appeal of the condition of the forty-five feet. And that we're really, that, that extra, um, feet above the forty-five will allow us to present the design that has been favorable, to have that sloped pitch roof, to hide the mechanical and attractive way with attractive materials. But still to have that facade be comparable with what has been approved and what's, uh, contemplated in your, in your code. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Couple of questions, one you might need to phone a friend for. Um, and it really is, I think, just related to how the space is going to be used for quote-unquote events. I think there's some different definitions of how people might be calling events. I'm more, I think, concerned about how many people we will have there at certain times, at how many times throughout the year. I don't know if that's something, um, in your conversations that you've already addressed that you want to bring forward, or if there's someone else that I should ask?
Madam Mayor, Council Member Hallie Burton, I'll, I'll begin that, and I apologize. I meant to address that with you. And my apologies for trying, we were trying to address your proposed condition to the member of the public, so that I could understand what the diocese's role was on that. So, um, and, and, and you had, you had asked, you know, could we have, um, uh, no more than a hundred people at a, an event? And could those events be no more than ten per year? And the answer is yes, that, that, that can work here. If that's, if that's something that you feel is necessary, that's, the, the space that's, that's here accommodates the employees during the day. Events would be after hours, and so there's plenty of space here. There doesn't seem to be a parking problem. The Planning and Zoning Commission recognized that, you know, a thousand people come and worship throughout the day, um, on Sundays, and there, that isn't creating an overflow of parking. Our use is going to be significantly less than that. And so we're comfortable that we've got enough parking to accommodate our use during the day and our after-hours uses as well.
Madam Mayor, following up there, um, the ideal thing for me would, would be for you to tell me how many you would want to have. But what I hear you telling me is that if you, if we condition this to say no more than ten events per year with a hundred people, um, that that would be acceptable?
That is correct, that would be acceptable.
Great. And then just one more question, if I may. You answered Council President Nash's question, I think, about the, the mixed use that's in the development code. This office space, you know, is something that would be allowed in mixed use, so that's certainly part of it. But there's a couple more parts of it as well. One is actually talking about the amount of ground floor retail or ground floor shop space. And then the other is talking about the amount of residential, um, units that are in there as well. And I'm wondering if you had any response to that?
Madam Mayor, Council Member Hallie Burton, yes, that's the same provision I was referring to that where it's talking about what the proposed use is. It's not explicitly listed as, um, not allowed as a permitted use, but that is certainly what was contemplated with that proposed use, all of those things. The, the four-story, the mixed use, the shop space and the residential units. And we're not bringing forward that. And so we are asking to clean that up to reflect our project. But it was at least contemplated through the uses of office being allowed and the uses in the RO zone. And so, you know, the, the application that's come before you is, is in that RO zone where that is allowed.
All right, and then Madam Mayor, just I think one final question here. So, and it's again, speaking towards that development agreement. If I'm looking at this development agreement and I'm thinking about a council who intentionally put some of these things on here because they thought that that's what they might want to see in the future, and you're coming in here and you're asking for it to be amended. Are you asking, does every single thing in here need to be amended? Would you be willing to keep shop floor retail of a certain amount? Would you be willing to keep mixed use or some housing on there? Or is this exactly what you would want to have proposed? Is there any wiggle room to include any other mixed-use types of activities on the facility that we could leave in the development agreement?
Mayor, uh, Council Member Hallie Burton, the, the office use that's being brought forward could not accommodate that. And so I'll look to the diocese to confirm that's, that is the project that they are looking to have approved. And so, um, so no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that wouldn't be part of the mix of uses that they're asking for.
Yep, I thought, I thought that that would probably be the case, wanted to ask, thank you. Madam Mayor. Ms. Nelson.
Ms. Nelson. I just want to make sure we're using the same language here. You referred to the change in the development agreement as just cleaning it up. I want to be clear, you expect that there is a legal impact to, like, if we do not make this amendment, it would materially impact the project, correct?
Madam Mayor, Council President, that's correct. We are asking that. That is the application. That is to reflect the new project.
Madam Mayor. Other question for Ms. Nelson.
Yep.
Ms. Nelson, I'd like to just clarify the housing issue. We've heard a lot of folks here tonight say that they prefer that this was housing apartments. And I think I heard you say before that there will be some housing. It will be for those who work for the Catholic Church, and I just want to clarify that is my understanding.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, no, there will not be housing in this building. The question was, wouldn't we give up the ownership of the house where the priest live? From Councilmember Morales. So that is residential. That's the component that is currently residential.
Madam Mayor, just a clarification. I had asked if there was any consideration to adding housing to this project. Supposedly priests could move into a newer, in this project and potentially free up and add more housing stock, so it wasn't a request to get rid of the...
My apologies. I didn't mean to characterize it that way. I was trying to explain my answer, though.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just all up there. So this is offices only. No one's going to live here.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We have three proposals before us. We have to consider them in a specific order.
Yep.
I don't think it would be appropriate to have multiple motions on the table for multiple actions at a time. So I think what I'd like to do is make a first motion, have a discussion broadly about the, about everything, and then, depending on where that conversation goes, have the next two motions for...
Yeah, but I want a motion on the floor before...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking clarification. Okay. And to be clear, council, this is for discussion purposes only, and we can go where the conversation takes us. I move approval of CAR 23-00020, a request to modify the existing development agreement to change the allowed use and site plan at 902 North 8th Street on 0.65 acres in an R-O-HD/DA residential office with historic design overlay and development agreement zone, and ask that staff return with findings. And to be clear, this is the, this is the staff recommendation for the CAR 230020.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the modification of the development agreement. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would just say this is the one that I have the most trouble with. I mean, it's also the one that is a recommendation from Planning and Zoning. This is not one we're reviewing for error. This is one we're considering de novo. The... I think my heartburn with this one is that we approved a rezone of this property in 2017 that was tied to a development agreement that specified multiple mixed uses. A subsequent change in the zoning code reflected that it would have stayed residential but for that rezone tied to this development agreement. And now we have here a proposal to amend that development agreement to restrict it exclusively to office. I think, I feel there's some unfairness there. I don't condemn any action. I think the Diocese and their council have acted in good faith here. I just have some problems with that. Additionally, in an area like this where it is like a transition zone, and we are encouraging mixed uses, it's a little difficult for me to restrict this from public access, which is what I feel like we're doing without retail, without housing. This is a private, closed facility. So I'd just like to have a, hear other council members' thoughts on this before we move forward. I think the next two things that we're going to consider, I think we have a lot less leeway in there, so we need to be thoughtful about how we want to proceed with this particular motion before we move on to the next ones.
Madam Mayor. I, too, I think heartburn is a good way of describing this because when I go back and I look at what was approved in 2017, I see a staff recommendation that said that that rezone at that time was in the best interest of the public because it was currently, it was then zoned R2, maximum density of 14 and 1/2 units per acre, and that that was not an appropriate zone given the anticipated development for the area, which includes more commercial uses and higher residential densities. It said this zoning change that went into effect encouraged more mixed-use development comprised of commercial and high-density residential uses. In addition, providing a commercial amenity close to the residential neighborhood is beneficial to the general population and community. It's also consistent with the surrounding uses across the streets. And so when I think of a commercial amenity to the public, I understand that this, you know, in a way has some really great benefit to this faith community and in turn to the whole general community, but it's not a direct amenity to the neighboring community. It's not a, you know, well, a commercial amenity that a neighbor would be able to use unless they were, you know, employed by this, by the Diocese. So I've had a lot of heartburn about that, that development agreement coming on the backs of that. You know, trying to think back to what they were doing then is helpful in this exercise, but also this is coming before us now. And I think with how we see the importance of housing, mixed use, vibrant communities, you know, this energy area and what this modification of a DA would do to what the original DA was trying to do, it just doesn't seem compatible.
Madam Mayor, I really appreciate the motion. I don't think that I'll be voting in support of the motion, and I'll explain why.
Madam Mayor, if I could clarify, for discussion purposes only, so entertaining any and all amendments to the...
Still not supporting it.
Okay.
But I appreciate that, and I appreciate you bringing a motion forward so that we can have this discussion. In 2022, in the Lust District, we approved a rezone, and it was going to be a multi-unit housing. It actually was going to be student housing. And one of the things that we added in a development agreement was to make sure that there was ground-floor retail. We allowed what they were wanting, but we restricted it to ground-floor retail because we knew that that was something that we wanted to see in that particular neighborhood. So we approved the rezone with the development agreement. The developer eventually pulled their application because they didn't want to do the ground-floor retail. And it's great to have that in place because now a future developer, when they come to that space, know that that's what council wanted to see at that space, and that's what they're going to have to design their, design their development towards. I think when council passed this, they had a vision of what they wanted to see in this area, and it wasn't that they didn't want the vision to include the Catholic Diocese or development like this, but they wanted to make sure that there was something that was being offered to the public. And they specifically included shop space on the ground floor to include that. All the other things that are there are wonderful, but they don't offer what council was intending them to offer with that development agreement. And so I don't have an issue with the height. If there was housing, I might even go higher. I don't have an issue with the reduction of parking. We were very, very intentional when it came to our zoning code to make sure that we allowed conditional use permits to reduce parking. In certain situations, this might be one of them. I don't have any issue with the events. I think what I have issue with is the development agreement that was put in place for a specific reason, to guide future development in this area. And I think this neglects the mixed-use aspect of it and the ground-floor retail aspect of it. If you were all able to figure out those two things, I would certainly be in favor of what you're putting forward, including the height and including the parking reduction.
Madam Mayor, this is certainly not a complex, this is a complex set of factors at play for here. We have a development that's changing. It's land use. We have zoning regulation and community preferences. It's evident, listening to neighbors, other council members, that we are in a housing crisis, housing is preferred, and looking at some mixed-use options at that ground floor. I tend to agree with the Neighborhood Association that I prefer to see housing. I'm not as concerned about the mixed-use portion of it, I guess, as my fellow council members, because right across the street, there are some great, there are some great businesses available. If this was in an area, in some desert areas where we wouldn't have near access to restaurants and to places to shop, I think it would be much more critical than it is in this area. However, we need to take a look at the rules that we've put in place. And what our planning team and the applicant has pointed out very clearly is that the office use is allowed in the zoning code of that legacy there. And it's also allowed, and we say it's allowed, within the development agreement. You may not like it, but that's what it says today. I believe that they are utilizing high-quality materials throughout the design. They have good design elements that enhance the overall project, and I am in support of the planning and zoning recommendation for those reasons.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and testified, and particularly staff and the applicant, and then the folks that have different opinions on this and walked us through. As everyone said, it's very complicated. There's a lot of different elements in this. You know, I'm reading the tea leaves, and I don't think that this motion will pass, but if it was voted on, I would vote for it. And there's a couple of different reasons for that. One is I think they've met the standard to do so, and I think they proved the case that an office building is appropriate there. And I think while others would like housing or even more retail, the reality is the Catholic Diocese are not going to put retail in the bottom of their shop, in the bottom of their facility. They're not going to put an ice cream shop. That's not what it's for. And I think we have to respect that this is an, this is an appropriate use for the location, and it's an opportunity for us to actually add a different, a different thing to the neighborhood, and I think that's a positive thing. So I would vote for the motion if it becomes available.
Madam Mayor, council, I'd ask unanimous consent to amend the motion.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to do that.
Are you sure I don't?
You have to ask unanimous consent to provide a substitute motion.
And then I think you have, we have to move or withdraw on that.
Oh, okay. Oh, if you want to withdraw it, just request unanimous consent to withdraw and start over.
Okay. I would ask unanimous consent to withdraw the motion.
That objection.
Madam Mayor, I move to deny CAR 23-00020, a request to modify the existing development agreement to change the allowed use of the site plan 902 North 8th Street on 0.65 acres in an R-O-HD/DA residential office with historic design overlay and development agreement zone, and ask that staff return with findings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Discussion?
Everybody's been said.
Madam Mayor, so if I would have made the motion, I probably would have made a motion that would have, that would have changed the development agreement, amended the development agreement to create some space if they wanted to. I don't think that that's going to be an option for them. Madam Mayor, I think I'm going to ask the motion maker to...
You can do unanimous consent.
Yeah, for unanimous consent for a second motion. Or, Madam Mayor, I move to make a substitute motion.
You were, you were request, your motion is that you would be allowed to make a substitute motion.
That's correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Morales.
I'm not sure what we're voting for.
Oh, okay. I should have explained it. I'm sorry. This is, the council member would like the opportunity to put a different motion on the floor. And so in order with, with some ideas that he likely has, I'm assuming if he wants to put a motion on the floor. And so this, in order, it's weird, but in our procedures, in order to put a substitute motion on the floor, you first have to ask with another vote for a substitute motion to be able to do that. So he's asking your permission to put a different idea out there.
Yes.
Sorry, I could have said that more gracefully.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. A substitute motion.
Madam Mayor. Give me one second.
Oh, yeah. Take your time.
Madam Mayor, I need to ask a question probably from staff or from legal. What I would like to do...
If it's going to be from legal, I'd ask you not to do it from the dius, but instead confer with legal.
I was on the right track. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve CAR 23-20 with the following amendments.
So you're approving the modification of the development agreement with additional conditions?
That's correct.
Okay.
The conditions would be to, the proposed new building will be a three-to-four-story mixed-use building. There will be shop space at grade. That's it.
Could, is there a second?
We're waiting one.
Maybe part of this is a clarification on mixed-use shop space. How much shop space would need to be there?
In order for that, I'm going to have to take a second for then the, no, that's not true. The maker of the motion can answer that question. And it might just require further clarification in the motion.
So it's not restricted by three to four stories. It's not restricted to three or four. It can be either one. We leave it as mixed use, and we're requiring a certain amount of shop space at grade. That means there has to be something available to the public at grade. I'm not including a specific amount of shop space, but I am removing office and keeping it as mixed use.
And could you clarify, are we silent as to residential units that was in the previous, that was previously in the development agreement?
That's correct. Motion fails.
Yeah. For lack of a second, the motion fails.
So...
So we're back at the
Back at column motion.
Original motion. Original motion.
Yeah, which was a move to deny the modification to the development agreement.
All right. Um, I would ask that there, because then this, oh, this doesn't return. Um, I would ask for, I know there's been discussion, but, um, some further discussion on this motion before the vote taken, just an explanation of the motion.
Yeah, just an explanation here. The, I believe that the rezone of this property was conditional upon this development agreement. And I think, um, amending the development agreement in this way fundamentally changes the reasons that the property was rezoned. Um, and I do not think this would have been rezoned if it did not include, uh, those specific mixed uses of retail space, um, or shop space, excuse me, and then the residential component. So I think that fundamentally alters why this property was rezoned in the first place, and that the development agreement should stay as is for those reasons.
The next question?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll support the motion. I think it's important that people know, uh, what it is that we want to see come forward. Next time this comes forward, it'll be an MX. Um, so it will no longer fall into underneath the city's prior zoning code. So it will, will be MX. Um, when it does come forward, it's going to still have a development agreement, um, attached to it. Um, that development agreement is going to specifically say the number of residential condominium units shall be 31, and there's going to be a specific amount of square footage on the bottom calling for shop-grade space. I think that it makes sense to deny the application. And I think that if I am a developer that is looking at the space in the future, um, I would encourage them to understand that as mixed use with residential. Is that that's the intention of how the council wants this space to be used, but not necessarily to be tied to exactly 31 units.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I'll be opposing the motion. This essentially kills the project. And, uh, the Diocese will likely not build on this site, and I think that's a darn shame. I think they gave us a, a, a great design. I think there was an opportunity here to provide some variety. And, um, I'm disappointed.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to comment that I, I think this project looked amazing, uh, the effort that went into, uh, the materials. I echo what Councilmember Hallie Burton noted about, you know, not concerned about height. And, um, I think from the applicant we heard, well, if we added housing, it might be taller. And, um, I think that, I hope that there is perhaps a chance that, uh, we might see the same applicant, um, with, with something that meets that development agreement. But, um, you know, I, I just want to thank the, the design team that put this project together. It was honestly from, from that aspect. Um, I really appreciate the effort put into that and just, um, hope that this piece of land can be used, um, in the way that it was intended under the current development agreement, and that will benefit generations to come that, you know, our, our future generations that want to live, work, and, and play here. Thanks.
I won't be voting, um, but I want to say a couple of things. First off, I want to thank everybody for being here. Um, I'm, I'm honestly disappointed. I think that there was room on both sides to compromise here. Um, it's a key spot that, for a key institution in our community. And there was a formal, former development agreement. It's clear the council wants to uphold that. But in the discussion and the questions that I heard tonight, I heard lots of curiosity and interest in getting to yes. Had there been a willingness to, you know, if not in advance tonight, talk more about that. I do want to comment on the, some of the comments that we heard tonight, um, related to the church. And be clear that I really believe that that had no place in, in the discussion tonight. Whether or not there's a cross on a building that's a private building should not be a matter of discussion or debate, nor should it be if it's a Star of David or a crescent, um, or anything else. We are a community that's truly for everyone, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. And, um, this was about a former development agreement, a vision for housing and mixed use in this area, and then tonight a request for office space, um, for an institution that provides pastoral care for Boise residents. Um, and frankly, it's the Diocese, so for residents of the entire state. Um, and so I just want to be clear about that, um, that none of that, um, should be a part of, or was a part, I think is evidenced by the discussion tonight. But, um, I also just wanted to be clear about that too, given that I, that I'm sitting up here. Um, and for that reason, or it's not, I don't vote anymore. Um, I won't be voting, but, um, it's really important to me that we all respect, um, the faiths, beliefs, the lives, the loves, um, and everything in between of every person in this room and in the city, regardless of our faiths, um, or the practices that we choose to have.
Willetts.
No.
Corliss.
No.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, on these additional motions, uh, after conferring with legal, it's appropriate for applicant to maintain entitlements consistent with the application, even if we're not approving all of the entitlements requested. So I'm going to go through these. I'm going to go through these. The first one, um, I move that we deny the appeal of CUP 23-00057 and uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit for parking, for a parking reduction, um, of onsite spaces, not to include any offside parking that may be contemplated by the record, and height exception on the property at 902 North 8th Street on point 65 acres in R-OHD/DA residential office with historic design overlay and development agreement zone, and ask that staff return with findings.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move that DRH 23-0039, the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission approval of a certificate of appropriateness to construct a three-story office building at 902 North 8th Street on point 65-acre property in a R-Z-O-HD/DA residential office with historic design overlay and development agreement zone, be approved in the decision upheld, and that condition 1M, limiting the height of the building to 45 feet, be removed. Let the record reflect that this is due to the submitted grounds for appeal demonstrating an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to place an additional condition of approval. The project was arbitrary and not based in fact. I ask that the staff return with findings.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, clerk?
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, sorry, go ahead. First, we're going to have Council President, then Councilmember Willetts.
Yeah, um, I would say, um, to the extent that it's, um, feasible, I, I stand by the condition of approving above 45 feet, um, and would be open to a project. I'd be even more open to projects that, uh, are more consistent with the uses that we discussed, um, exceeding that height limit. So just wanted to state that.
Councilmember Willetts?
Madam Mayor, I was seeking clarification on the motion. That covers it.
Oh, it does, great, okay. Anything else?
Uh, one thing I'd like to add on the last motion is that I, I do want to make sure that we're keeping that separate parcel, that blacktop that was the parking untethered, um, so that it could be a separate development.
And Madam Mayor, that was the previous motion, and I added language to the staff recommendation that, that, that those not be included.
Thank you.
All right, clerk?
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yeah.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Post? We're adjourned.